We are just a little bit past seven o'clock and I'll call our city council meeting to order. Karen, could we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Husnick?
Here.
Councilmember Munson?
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Here.
Councilmember Valento?
Here.
And Mayor Bain? Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, we have an agenda before you this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
Mayor Bain, I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and agenda is approved. Our next item this evening is open forum. Open forum is residents' opportunity to speak to council on any topic of your choosing. I said residents, I actually mean interested party. We invite all. Is there anybody for open forum this evening? We do ask that you limit comments to three minutes. I see a hand up. Do you want to add? We'll just wait till the end. Oh. Our first up is Geneva Kubal?
Yes.
And if you could come to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Geneva Kubal. The reason I'm here tonight is I am appealing a decision by the Public Works Department. We requested a streetlight and it was denied. And so I was looking over the streetlight policy and it said, "Streetlights were designed not to provide things for private residents' security." That's not why we put in our request. It was to, basically, it's for what we feel is safety reasons. And that is one of the reasons why you can put things, lights, in. Our pedestrian hazard is lack of a sidewalk and about half the distance of a street, the other nearby streets, just by our location. In addition to this, there is a streetlight that is up. It's been out for quite some time. It has been put in to be fixed. It's been 14 days, which I'm not complaining about that. But even if that were to be fixed, there's two really large trees that prevent light from entering into this narrow area. I understand that there's a lot of numbers involved in these things, and numbers do not tell the full story. Distances between poles are one thing, but reality might be another, and I am unsure and unclear if the person went out in the evening when the hazards are really identified. So I applaud his effort for responding to me immediately, but I don't think that our concerns were really addressed. I also was walking around the neighborhood, which I do a lot, and I seen other areas with similar distances, if even not closer than the one I am requesting, and I was given the criteria for that, which seems a little bit subjective, which is fine. I understand that things can be a little bit subjective. But when I look at those locations where the lights are closer, there is a sidewalk, there is nothing distracting any of the streets and the lights in this area, and it's a wider road. So again, I don't think that, even though they're closer, I still think it would be nice to have a light in our direction. Even if we get the light, and that would really be fantastic. And when I spoke to the residents, I spoke to everybody who lived by this light, every resident signed it easily. Nobody had a concern, and they said it would be a great idea. So we are hoping that the council will at least consider this request or come up with some other alternate plan that can come up with some lighting for the residents in this very dark, dead-end area where the intersection that we have to walk into is not well lit. So thank you for your time. That is my concern.
Thank you for being here. And, yeah, okay. Eugene Hurstel.
Thank you, City Council. Eugene Hurstel, 10234 204th Street North, Forest Lake. And I just wanted to, I see that the budget is on the agenda today and that, and I would like to say a couple things that... I saw a pretty good size increase. It's kind of hard. We're all, I know, dealing with inflation. I hope you don't use that as an excuse. But as we see our taxes going up and having to pay more and more each year, especially retired people, and fixed incomes and that, I'm speaking for them and myself. I know it's, people will ask me, "Well, where can you cut?" And there are places where you can cut. If you go in and look at the audit and look at some of these things, there are places, maybe some will need an increase, but other places can be reduced. I do see that, and I did have a talk with Al previous here, about you are hiring an inspector, and with all the, I guess, all the building and everything going on, that would probably be paid for, you know, through building permits and stuff, okay? I don't know what the cost is or what the total cost that that would be. But if you look at, maybe every year, we look at capital improvements or we look at certain, well, let's see, we need this equipment, or let's, and it's just each year in a row, we buy this, then the next year we buy this. Maybe we should stop and say, "Okay, maybe this year we don't," and see if you could come back. And I know maybe you've talked to heads of your departments or what, but discuss and see. There is a way. There is a way. Also, I would just like to say, Mr. Adams on the Public Works, since he's been here, I used to live in the Forest Lake Township, and I know it's been 20 years. But now, since he's been here, things happen with the roads and the different things. Or if we need something done, we can call him. He does it one at a time. He answers our phone calls. He always gets back to us and stuff. So I know that there's people in the township that do appreciate what he's done. And I would still say, "Let's keep the roads going," and, you know, that type of road sewer, public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Eugene.
Is there anybody else for open forum this evening? And anybody online for open forum?
There's not.
All right. With that, we'll close open forum tonight and move on to our consent agenda. Council before you is consent agenda items 6A through 6L. Happy to entertain a motion or any changes.
Mayor Bain, I'd like to pull 6E. I just need to recuse myself.
And is that a motion to?
Yes, I will, I'd like to pull item 6E, and I will make a motion to approve items 6A through D and F through L.
A second. Very good. We have a motion from Councilmember Beistrum and a second from Councilmember Munson. All of those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and consent agenda items approved. Moving on to the regular agenda is consent agenda item 6E.
I just wanted to recuse myself. The organization that I work for, and I was pretty heavily involved in this project, so.
Understood and respected. I would motion that we approve agenda items 6E, the 19850 Fenway Avenue North Conditional Use Permit, Fifth Amendment. Is there a second? Second from Councilmember Husnick. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and one abstention. Motion approved. Moving on to our regular agenda, the first item is the American Legion Fourth of July Events Date for 2022. Karen, I believe you're kicking this off for us.
I had someone from the American Legion, Pat, contact me, and they wanted to come forward and talk about the dates for next year, get those approved by council if you agree. And then I think he had some other talking points that he wanted to talk through with council. So welcome, Pat.
Perfect. Welcome.
Thank you. Short talking points. Hi, I'm Pat Silovich. I'm currently serving as the First Vice Commander. I was getting there.
I know you were.
First Vice Commander at the, at Legion, American Legion Post 225 here in Forest Lake. Vicky Petrie is with tonight, Finance Officer on the board for eight, 10 years.
Past commander.
Past commander times two, and currently serving on the board as previous commander. Ashley, who you may remember from a couple, three years ago, is here with me, and she couldn't be here tonight because of family circumstances. So it was, it was nice three years ago when she was here. At that meeting, basically, we talked about the expense of pyrotechnics and Fourth of July fireworks. It basically comes down to $1,000 a minute. And I know we're on the agenda to confirm this coming year's date, but I didn't want to not take the opportunity to first say thank you for contributions of the past and hopefully of the future, and also to remind you that, like many other businesses, because of COVID and also because of a major kitchen fire, we had to shut our kitchen down for five months, which we just got all done refurbished, relicensed, permitted, and we're up and running, and COVID hit. So you can imagine that our fundraising abilities have really been shot down. The silent auctions, the spaghetti dinners, and the like. And it's going to be that way for the next year or two while we're still seeking to recover. So thank you for contributions of the past. We want to continue to be able to provide a 25 to 30-minute outstanding, outstanding Fourth of July fireworks, as well as the parade and the flyover and all the other events that go with it. As most of you know, I hope know, the driver is the Legion. So thank you for past support and looking forward to partnering together in the future. Dates-wise.
Well, we wanted to get on the agenda, at least to get our Fourth of July dates out there for the community. So we are looking at June 30th, which is Thursday, through July 4th, which is a Monday. And then on Monday is where we would have our parade in the morning and the fireworks at night, which is traditionally what we do. It did work out really nice last year because we did the parade on Saturday, because we don't do it on Sunday, just due to church and stuff like that. But then we did the fireworks on Sunday, which worked out well. But that won't happen again for another five years. But, so we wanted to ask for the dates to be June 30th. It'll be like in the evening, the carnival opens, and then go through July 4th. And then I just wanted to thank you also for the fireworks and also for the porta potties. That was a great help. Because I know that the city ended up being, for the porta potties that went out along the parade route down by the beach, and it's very well appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Don't go away yet. I just want to confirm that in tonight's budget, that we have the fireworks budgeted as well as kind of same level of services that we've provided in past years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Porta potties, all of that good stuff. Police and fire service, I know, does a fair amount, and Public Works as well do a fair amount. Perfect. And then official action tonight? Obviously, we've got the preliminary levy on the agenda later in this evening. Is there official action that's needed for the dates? Are you just looking for feedback from us on?
Feedback.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I guess I would ask the chiefs on feedback around the dates as proposed, any concerns? Is this a, and I guess I would also ask as part of that, is this part of the standard when the Fourth of July is on a Monday? Is this typically what we've done, is a Thursday to Monday celebration?
That is correct.
Okay. Any?
Yeah, no issues from Chief Newman and I. And Thursday, I believe, would be the setup. Is that correct?
That would be when we start. So they would probably set up Tuesday, Wednesday.
Okay.
All right. Yep, and...
No parking signs and all of this.
Yeah, like Pat and Vicky said, it's, from our recollection, that's how it's always been for a Monday, July 4th.
Perfect. And do we need an official action to memorialize the dates?
I was going to say, historically, it looks like you have voted on that in the past to approve the dates.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted that clarification. So just some comments. So thank you for all you do for this event. It is our headline event of the year. And council is very much aware that this is not a city event. It's a Fourth of July, it's an American Legion-sponsored event. But I think the general public doesn't necessarily know that. So any opportunity I get, I always like to give you credit for all of the hard work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Continue to keep us in mind. As we know, fundraising has been challenging, and so if you need some pies in the face or whatever, we've done it in the past, and we'd probably do it again.
All right.
So keep us in mind, and thank you for all you do. Council, are there any other?
No, just say that it was really well-run last time. I don't think there were any issues at all, so it really worked out well.
Fireworks in particular were fabulous.
Yeah, the fireworks, that was, there was a lot. They were the talk of the town.
Well, it is a female-run fireworks, just so you know. Ashley Venberg sets up all the fireworks. She's the one that's certified. She's the one that plugs them all in. She runs it.
I think when Ashley and I were here three years ago, or whenever it was, she was under training. That training took about five years. And like Vicky said, now she is, she's fully credentialed and all that. So she's the main, she's the main button pusher.
Yep.
Button pusher.
Well, tell her more of the same. It was just really well done. So with that, I would motion that we approve the dates as proposed by the American Legion for the Fourth of July celebration. Is there a second? Motion and a second from Councilmember Munson. Any further discussion or questions from council? With that, all of those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item this evening is the Stacy Lint Burn Tower Rental Agreement and Release Form. Chief Newman?
Mayor, members of council, this is for a training that we do up in Stacy Lint. And we have it scheduled for two days, October 5th and October 9th. And the reason why we schedule it for two days is we can't take the entire department out of the area. So we break it up and have half the department go on one day and the other half go on the other day. Now, we've actually trained up there for four or five years. This is the first year that they've actually had an agreement for us to sign. In the agreement, our damage deposit is $0. The cost isn't listed, but it's $600 a training night. So for both training nights, it's $1,200, which is substantially less expensive as it would be if we were able to do a burn in a house ourselves. So, and then it's been reviewed by the city attorney. So if you have any questions for me, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, chief. Council, any questions for chief this evening?
No, I guess, Peter, did you have any questions or, I mean, comments about it?
Your Honor, Councilmember Husnick, no concerns with the agreement.
Well, then I make a motion that we go ahead with the agreement and the training session.
I'll second. Motion from Councilmember Husnick and a second from Councilmember Valento. Any further discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
And don't go far. Next item, Building Inspector One Position Hiring Recommendation. Has also...
Okay, so up for consideration is filling the Building Inspector One position. That position has been empty for almost two years. When COVID hit, we kind of just stopped. We didn't know where the building was going to, construction was going to end up with COVID, and so we used Minspect to do a lot of our contract inspection when we fell behind, peaks and valleys. And we're getting to the point where building's starting to pick up. Looking to the future, it looks like we've got some residential and commercial and apartments coming into the area. And so we want to back off using Minspect and actually fill that position, which has been vacant for two years. So we did interviews, and on 9/13, we made a conditional offer to Robert Peru, who has actually worked at Minspect and been the inspector out in Forest Lake for the last couple of years. He works great with the contractors. I get a lot of positive feedback from the contractors on the inspection job that he does. So we're recommending to hire Robert Peru, starting at a grade seven, step three, at 33, 38 per hour.
Thank you, chief. Council, questions for chief? You answered the one question I had. I know that we've had conversation around customer service and needing to have the right person in this position. So I just wanted to, my question was to make sure that you were comfortable, that we were gaining that expertise, and it sounds like he's actually served in Forest Lake before, and you have some real feedback, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's a known commodity with him. So I'm excited, if approved, to bring him on.
I had this conversation with Chief Newman earlier, just kind of a man-to-man thing, and it seemed like it's going to actually fit the bill that we need here in Forest Lake. So if you need a motion, I'll certainly make that motion that we...
I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay, that we go ahead with the hiring of Robert Peru for the Building Inspection Position, Builder Inspector One Position, as recommended by Al Newman.
I'll second.
A motion by Councilmember Husnick and a second from Councilmember Beistrum. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Next up this evening is a resolution to end the citywide watering ban that was enacted in July. And Dave, you're going to walk us through this.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As Mayor Bain just said, in July, end of July, we put on a watering ban, July 27th. As the DNR sit near in severe drought stage, and we're to cut back our usage to January usage, which was about a million and a half that we needed to cut off for our daily usage. So the only, only way we saw fit was to declare a watering ban. So that was enacted. Staff has been monitoring the, you know, DNR drought map. It comes out every Thursday. Early September, the city was removed out of the severe drought. And in the memo, that is the September 14th map, and then on the diocet anchor, Karen had given you the update of September 21st, which is pulled back even farther. A lot of the red has gone as well. So, and the exceptional, the maroon around Red Lake. So I believe the city, the state is, as a whole, moving in the right direction. I guess, moving more into the yellow with the more moisture and the cooler weather. So I think staff feels safe with what we've seen and the trend. As soon as we got out of the severe drought, I didn't want to remove it right away. I wanted to see it trending for two, three, four weeks in that right direction. So I think the way it's trending right now, we don't have a risk of taking it off and then putting it back on again. And that's what I didn't want to have happen. So I think where we're at right now, hopefully, we get a good winter with some snow. Public Works, they really don't want a lot of snow, but you know. Catch 22.
He was going to say what side they were.
Come to the two hats you wear.
Yeah. So just like I said in the memo, just a quick calculation of what our average is in these last 60-some days, we probably conserved about 75 to 100 million gallons of water out of our aquifers. So that's, that's a pretty big deal that we save that much water. So I'd just like to thank the residents and everybody for complying with the ban, and it's greatly appreciated. So when you put these on, sometimes you don't know how it's going to go, but it went very well. I think we wrote out a couple hundred citations at the most, and most of them were just first-time warnings and... A lot of it were, people just run away. So... Yeah, with that, you know, if you have any other questions, but I'm just recommending and passing the resolution to end the watering ban.
So that'd take us back to the odd-even watering, then? Is that still in effect? I mean, that's pretty much the way it is, right?
Yep, so city ordinance is odd-even, and I think, you know, in discussing even with council and staff, I think that's something that we need to work on a little bit better going into next spring. I think this year, it's kind of going to be rough. You see a lot of people blowing out their irrigation already that aren't even going to be thinking about it. But I think our message boards did really well this year. I think we're going to put them out in the spring as people are firing up, just to let everybody know, just a reminder. It's always odd-even watering, you know, and help us not get into a watering ban, just follow the ordinance. So I think that's, it's, you know, I know and a lot of other people know, but some residents, you know, they have some, you know, their irrigation, they put it on every day watering, and they don't. That'll be a big thing, a push in the spring, just to get that out and remind people or just let people know that is what our ordinance is all the time, is odd-even.
Sure.
I'd like to suggest we, I don't know, if we distribute a flyer or put up a sign or something at the compost when it opens? You know, a lot of folks doing spring cleanup, you know, dropping things off. It might be a great, a great place to, you know, draw some awareness to the odd-even.
Yep, we can grab a bunch of people, even our utility bill, and know that it's back in house.
Yeah.
We can, we can add flyers a lot easier, even a full page add in the utility bill, which comes out beginning of April.
That's great.
After the first quarter, you know, just to catch everybody's eye. So I think a lot of people, when they saw their bills after they were watering every day, I think maybe banned themselves, you know.
I bet they did.
It's awful to see what happens when you water every day.
Yeah.
Maybe, you know, some of that as well. But definitely in the spring, we will circle back. I think the compost is a great idea, too. We get a lot of people through there.
Yeah. Well, Mayor Bain, I move adoption of Resolution 09-27-21-03, ending of the citywide watering ban that was enacted on July 26th, 2021.
I'll second. We have a motion from Councilmember Beistrum and a second from Councilmember Valento. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'd just add, echo Dave's appreciation of businesses and residents on helping us by being in compliance and saving all of that water. Much appreciated. All of those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. Our next item this evening is consideration of adoption of the 2022 Preliminary Property Tax Levy. And Sandy, I believe you're walking us through this.
Yes. By September 30th of every year, we are required to bring to the council a resolution to approve the preliminary levy for the year, which is for 2022, as well as the date for the final levy certification, which we have set for December 13th at 6:00. And the board or the council had before them the budgets, but we did send a revision to tonight for the EPA budgets. So looking at the certification of the preliminary levy for 2022, the total amount is $12,530,771, which is a 9.46% increase. And you have the breakdown before you win the resolution as well.
Thank you, Sandy. Patrick, anything further?
No, I, I'll wait until the budget presentation, budget discussion and presentation. I don't know if you want to do that before you pass the levy or you'd want to wait to do that then. It's really just answering some of the questions that came up on Monday. Also, that, just to remind everybody, this is a preliminary levy, and that levy may change. It cannot go up, but it possibly, and we'll work hard to see how, if we can get it down a little bit, at least somewhat, so.
My preference would be to hear the full context of conversation and then bring back for a vote after, after that conversation. But happy to hear feedback. I see some nodding heads. So Patrick, why don't you go ahead and...
I have to switch spots.
In the meantime, I kind of want to, you know, I want the taxpayers to know that this is the ultimate wish list. And so if there can be something that we can do there, we'll...
Agree, certainly.
We'll work on it.
Certainly the emphasis on preliminary tonight.
Yep, preliminary, you bet.
But I also think that it's important for us to identify and communicate need, you know.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's what this does.
I agree.
It's, you know, and I, and I understand what you're saying, Councilmember Husnick. I think it's less of a wish list and more of a need list. So it may be semantics, but I think they're important. They're important words, so.
Okay, so I wasn't here on Monday, but there seemed to be a few questions I thought we should go over before we go to the levy. This is a pretty straightforward presentation. It just is more informational, and I've tried to give you some history and background of what we've kind of looked at for the last few years. So it meanders a bit, but I think it'll answer some of the questions we may be looking for, so.
Just to interrupt you and to tee up context, this is maybe the third or fourth discussion council has had on this topic. And certainly, if it feels like you're coming in midway, you are. And the goal tonight is to reach council consensus, and then certainly there's opportunity for future discussion before we adopt final in December, so.
Correct.
We are very much picking up a conversation that has been in play for a number of meetings.
And October will be, workshop will be a pretty large discussion. We'll get into some of the things that we'll mention in a few minutes or so. I want to talk about growth somewhat. The question came up is, you know, we're growing. How does, how's the market go? The question came up is, you know, we're growing, how does, how's the market go? What's the levy versus the market rate? Just for reference, this is the recent census report from the Metropolitan Council. And the interesting item here is the number of housing units that have been added since the last census. Now, I know there's been some issues with the census and maybe it's not as accurate, but the next slide will show it's pretty darn accurate. So we have added over a thousand, a thousand sixty housing units. That's, that's a lot to add with, and we haven't increased staff and police and things like that, and we'll get to that in a minute. So our population has gone up, we're now at twenty thousand, six hundred and eleven. So that indicates that we're a growing community and we're, it's going to continue. There's a lot of opportunities and vacant land and, and housing demand that has been unmet in the metropolitan area that's only going to continue to increase as we go along. Just to, to look at our own internal data regarding residential building activity, it, it really mimics the number of households that was reported by the census. We see that in, since 2014, we've added three hundred and forty-four single-family homes. We've added fifty-eight townhouse units, and, and the amazing one is six hundred and fifty-six apartment units. Again, a thousand fifty-eight, so really close to that thousand sixty number that you saw from the Metropolitan Council. Again, showing, showing some kind of the growth that we're, we're anticipating and anticipate to continue. Just looking at some of the growth indicators that we, we look at, and this information is always in the back of your audit book, you know, it's the statistical, so that's where this is gained from. And if you look at this, this is a real good indication of what we're seeing. So in 2011, our police calls were twelve thousand, seven hundred. Now there's sixteen thousand, and that's probably even low because 2020 was a COVID year, so we probably may not have as many. Again, the fire calls went from four forty-four to four ninety-five. Some years it's even been higher. I didn't give the whole gamut of, of those reporting. We resurfaced ten miles of street in 2011 and four point seven miles in 2020. Here's another large indicator, the water connections in 2011 were thirty-eight, fifty-eight, and now we have forty-two, forty-three. Water main breaks, as you see, have increased, and that shows of a, an infrastructure that needs a lot of attention, and we've been trying to get there. I think we're well into handling some of those issues of both the water and the sewer fund, as we've gone through before. The average water consumption in 2011 was nine hundred and forty-one thousand gallons versus one point two three-three million gallons. Again, another indicator, sewer connections pretty much mimic the, the increase in the water going from fifty-five, sixty-five to six thousand fourteen. We've, we've reorganized parks and the seasonal workers and things. We used to hire twenty-three, now we hire sixteen on a, on a summer basis. We've gone from a hundred and thirty miles to a hundred and thirty-nine miles of roads. We've gone from sixty-nine water, miles of water mains to seventy-five miles of water mains. We've gone from seven hundred and one fire hydrants to seven hundred and ninety-eight fire hydrants. We've gone from ninety-one miles of sanitary sewer to a hundred and seven miles of sanitary sewer. We've gone, and we've stayed stable with parks and park acreage in those years, which also should tell us that we should be paying more attention to park, park acreage.
Right. I know there's a lot of shocking numbers on here, but that's the one that really stands out. We have not added a single, all those housing units, and we've not added a single park.
And, and that's, that's something we really have to work at and pay attention to because, again, going back to the strategic plan, one of the issues was people like parks and trails and lakes.
Yes.
We, we're not, we're, we're not getting there yet. So as each new development comes, we are, we are trying to get them to add parkland. And being somewhat successful, what happened in the past was they took the money instead of the parkland. Well, money's easier to get back than park, than land. Land, once land goes, it's gone. You can't put a park where housing development is. So we have to be cognizant that we have to pay attention to acquiring more parkland to meet those long-term needs of, of the citizens. One of the issues came up is our levy, and, you know, always we pay a lot of attention to the increase in levy from year to year, which is really kind of misleading. It, it really doesn't tell you where we're going. It's, it's, it's just a number that says how much we're raising, the, the amount of money that we need to, to operate. So I was, we tried to come up with a, a way to show you the levy increases versus the market taxable increases, the land, the value of the land. So if you look at the history since 2014, you see a pretty kind of standard three point six, seven, five, mostly five percent increases. That's pretty much what our average is looking like. So, but if you look at the value of our marketable taxable land, it tells a different story. It tells that we've gone up seven point nine percent, six percent, three point nine percent, nine point seven, eight point seven, four point six, and four point three. And that varies depending on what the assessment is, with the market value, obviously. If you have a hot housing market, that value's going to go up because demand's there. So instead, what I, what I wanted to show is that if we tied, and I don't recommend this, quite honestly, if we tied the increase in our levy on an annual basis to what the market value goes, you can see what it does here, and I've used the same percentages. But what really, i- if we did it that way, we'd, we'd be one point one million dollars short of what we've actually leveled, levied for taxes. So you can see the market has been better. If we had followed that kind of a formula, we would be, we would be a million dollars ahead or have more a million dollars to, to do our operations and possibly give that to roads or give that to whoever or whatever, because as you all know, the needs in the city are great as far as infrastructure, parks, and all associated. So that kind of just tries to give you an indication of what the market's doing versus how we levy. The other thing is that the question was asked, you know, we talked a little bit about the, the hiring of community development director and what the costs of services are to different types of land use. It has been always the case since I've known, and, and most records are, is that commercial industrial land requires less public service than houses do. And even, even if you want to break that down in residential, when you have apartment buildings, they usually take more services than a single-family home, just because of the mass of people all in one place. So you see here that the cost for every dollar of property tax is received, services for commercial industrial land is twenty-nine cents, whereas the cost of service to residential units is a dollar sixteen. So it's in our best interest and long-run interest is to try to attract and retain more commercial industrial land. I mean, that's, that's the goal here. Again, we have a comprehensive plan that addresses some of those uses, but we have to probably be a little bit more progressive and, and aggressive, basically, in, in trying to get those type of developments in, in the city. There was a number of requests for positions this year, and recently the discussion about hiring a community development director, the hiring of a community development or EDA specialist came out of the EDA committee a few weeks back, and they made a valid point that we aren't aggressively out there trying to recruit business. We're a reactive community instead of a proactive community. And if we want to try to take advantage of that earlier slide where we're only spending twelve cents per, per dollar as opposed to a dollar sixteen, we need to get out there and try to attract and recruit businesses. So what we requested, in the budget currently, there's a police sergeant, which is a result, and we did a study years back from the Center for Public Safety Management that tells us that we need a police sergeant. We've included it that, this year, we've talked about it for a couple, since I've been here and probably before. We are, we put in a police patrol officer that will get us back to levels that we had in 2015. And again, if you look at both the police surgeon and the police officer and our police staff, and since 2015, not going up, and we have a thousand more residential units. And I think that, that tells you that we're probably falling a little bit short on, on some of that. Also, we, we've recommended the, and it's not in the budget, but I'll say this a few times tonight, is that we have to go back and do some of the math, and we'll bring that to the October meeting. But I, I fully and strongly support the creation and hiring of a community development director who also is in charge of the EDA. Again, why now? Well, we need to be proactive. We need to be proactive instead of reactive, like I said earlier. It will help us increase development activity and potential development in the near future. I mentioned here Highway ninety-seven, Highway eight, that was mentioned at the meeting. Those are going to be corridors that are going to be redone and refurbished, and when that happens, that brings more traffic and more people and usually more development. So we have to be ready to, to take advantage of those opportunities. We've had a vac, we now have a vacancy in the planning department. It's, since we have that, we should take advantage of that and take a look at how we can restructure and refresh the delivery of community services, community development services, and I think they're sorely needed to refurbish that, that department and have a new look. Being a community development director, part of EDA, his or her duties will focus a lot on emphasis on economic development as well as the, the building and planning and zoning side. And it'll just really give us a more responsive and organized approach to residential, commercial, industrial development, like, and I have to compliment Dan and Ryan and Dave, listening to a meeting last week, they did a great job in describing some of the things that were going on here. And the point here is that we need to be clear to developers, what our expectations are, what the rules are, what they need to do to complete. One of the struggles that we have here or have had here is that we tell the developers one thing, and oh, by the way, three, four weeks, a month later, or three months later, we tell them, oh, we forgot to tell you this, or no, that's not what I meant. And we have to correct that, and we'll be honest, we're not throwing stones at anybody, it's just the way that the operation has, has worked. And, and part of that, and part of the reason for a community development director, I believe that the prior incumbent, the position, had too much on his plate. What they tried to do when they created that position is they eliminated community development director, they eliminated planner, and they eliminated a planning assistant and folded that all into one. And that really overwhelmed that position, whether the, he, he was good or bad or indifferent, that position was overwhelmed, and it was never destined for success, no matter who we put on there, so. Again, the goal is strategic focus, communicate to the development community a clear vision, standard development, standardized development review. Big one is to increase outreach and recruitment of business. I think if we're getting out there and attending those meetings and those seminars and those things that are out in the community or out in the greater metro, I think we have a better chance to get people and businesses here. We need to work better with the community partners. Again, some of these things are repeating, but we need to retain and support local business as well. And finally, I think this position can also have insight and seek additional funding sources to help us pay for some of this development or grants or studies or whatever the case may be that we need. How do we pay for it? Again, we will come back with a revised general fund EDA budget to address what we think and how we're going to pay for it in October, but it's going to be a split position between the general fund and economic development fund. You did have a revised economic development fund on your desk tonight that shows that. And we believe that a lot of the, some of, that we can get some of the savings from, from the outsourcing activities that we do now. We, we depend highly on our engineering firm, and they do a great job. I can't quantify exactly what kind of savings that'll be, but I think that we can reorganize and redirect some of those charges back into the city system, particularly now we have a new building inspector, we can do some more plan review internally, not send that out to, to the engineering firm, and look at those opportunities to reduce the costs or the payments to those firms. The, the incumbent was a planner, planner's life zoning administrator. We also recommend filling that vacant position. That person will, you know, be responsive to daily requests and work while the community development director will be more high-level and out there in the street and, and doing some things. And again, like I said, not trying to manage two jobs. He'll only try to manage, he or she will only manage one. We also are recommending a community development coordinator. What I don't want is the community development director or the planner to get bogged down in daily type of minutes and agenda typing agendas and things like that, but this person, what we're, we're also recommending would coordinate code enforcement, assign code enforcement complaints to either an inspector or to the zoning administrator if, if that's the case. And again, do help with the minutes and, and also may be able to help in other areas with the building department and so forth. So we're looking at those as well. Recently, we had a, the communications recreation coordinator become vacant on a resignation. Again, we need to take the opportunity to look at that position and, and restructure or understand it better. My thought is that if we're hiring a community development director and a, a community development team, it'll take the EDA responsibilities away from the assistant administrator, and how's that with the community development director? That will free up the assistant administrator to focus on communications. We've had that discussion already, we think that's a good model. Dan has experience in some of that, so I think we can do a good job with that. And also kind of shift some of the other duties to the recreation people or to the assistant city clerk to do some of the other web updates and things like that. So we'll see how that works. If, I mean, if, if it doesn't work well, obviously we'll have to come back and, and try again, but I think, I think with this, this structure, the assistant administrator knows the city better than, than any communications coordinator walk in the door. The first goal will be to create a communications plans and, and guidelines and things so that we can set it up for success. And being that Dan is here just like everybody else on a daily basis and every meeting, for the most part, we won't miss that much, where I think we kind of missed a little bit with the prior position there, so. Again, we will update the budget in October, that's the goal here. So I wanted to go over a little bit of the history that most, most of you may know, but some out in the community may not, or may, regarding how our budget, how our personnel count went. I've got a couple of charts here, again, from the, the two, 2020 audit, that shows our staffing levels over the years since 2011. And you can, I won't read them all, but you can see things like our administration went from two to three, our finance went from four to a low of two at one point. Community development, we had three people in the prior years, and that went to one. Facility maintenance stayed the same. I've already talked about the police officers going from twenty-five to twenty-six and then back down to twenty-five. Police civilians got as low as two. We have one fire chief. We had a fire inspection person and process, but that was eliminated, so we, we don't do much of that as, as we should. And building inspectors, we were at four, and we went down to as low as two at one year, and we're at three after 2020, so. Same thing with public works. You see that at one time, highway and streets were six, it went down to five. Just recently, we, we recaptured some of that. Maintenance in public works is about the same. We've stayed the same with surface water and the parks program, and the park maintenance, we've recently added a couple of that, was when we talked about the, the maintenance of Fenway and the city grounds and things like that. Water has stayed stable at two, sewer has stayed stable at two, and finance, which is the clerk for water and utilities, has stayed at one. So if you look at this, we were running a high of fifty-eight and fifty-nine employees until approximately 2014, when it started to, to decrease to a low of fifty-three. And the point here is that we've, we've, we've cut staff, we lowered staff, why, we're still growing and getting bigger, and demands are getting greater. That's a story. That's, that's an issue that we should be looking at and should know. Yes, I, I'm one that will like efficiency in government and staffing-wise, but you can't, when you're a growing community like we are, you have to really be careful when you have positions not to, A, undercut yourself, but not then to overfill either. So I think some of the proposals that we have in, for the 2022 budget are, are the right ones. I think if we adopt those staffing levels as recommended, that will keep us at a good place for a while. I don't think we'll have to increase much in administrative staff any longer. We'll have to look at police staff as that grows, possibly fire staff, just because of, you know, get hit by a bus theory, if, if somebody isn't here, who's going to run the fire department? So we need a succession plan there that I think we have to address, but. to address. But the proposed positions will put us in a real good place that we should be comfortable with. And as we continue to grow, we will evaluate police officers, fire, and maintenance in parks and streets and sewers. We won't automatically add those, but as we grow and demands increase, we will continue to evaluate those. Just going back from that chart, I just wanted to show you, in two thousand and twenty-three, there was a proposed reorganization that most of it got implemented. And I just wanted to show you what they did. And I'll go through this quick. But we eliminated a building official, building inspector, building assistant, building maintenance supervisor, and a custodian. Part of this was to add firefighter slash building officials, firefighter, building inspector, fire tech. This was to have some daytime response in the fire department. This was really a pretty good idea, so that we still have a building inspector and a fire technician that will go out on fire calls and respond to those. The firefighter custodian hasn't taken place because they were waiting for the incumbents of those positions to retire, and that hasn't happened yet. So. There was no savings for that, but I think that was more of an operational change than it was just a reduction and, you know, trying to save money change. Phase two of that reorganization saw the community development director, the city planner, the city planning, the community development assistant, and the park director all be eliminated. The thought was to add a community develop, I'm sorry, an economic development coordinator, which never happened. They combined the planning and then zoning administrator into one, so that person took on those three positions all for his own. They downgraded the park director and hired a trails and parks coordinator. That was just really kind of a, just a declass of that. And there was a suggestion of a CSO paid internship program for the police department, which also never happened. Phase three, they eliminated the public works director, a street lead worker, and a utility worker. Instead, they hired a public works superintendent. They put that at a lower level. That was a method they could do that. Put in a street maintenance worker and a water and sewer maintenance worker. They saved fifty-seven thousand dollars for that Phase four, eliminated a police typist, a police evidence technician, and a senior police administrative secretary. And in its place, put three support people. Estimated savings of that, about fifty-nine hundred dollars. So if you look at all that reorganization that was proposed in two thousand and thirteen, it saved the city a total of one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, basically. And not every year that you save one hundred and nineteen thousand, but even if you multiplied that by five years, it's still a very small amount of savings for that kind of a reorganization, while at the same time hampering your service levels and your organization's response to citizens and developers and whoever else. So that's just the impact of that. Other staffing changes that happened as well, again, they eliminated the fire inspection position, which I'd mentioned before. They eliminated the finance director's position and outsourced that, which, I'll be honest, I never understand why you would do that. That's a major portion of what you do. So we have, as you know, put that back in the budget, have finance department back in the budget. And I already talked about eliminating a police position and that. We had a count of fifty-eight and went down to a count of fifty-three. Just to talk a little bit about the financial plan and bonding, we continue to work on a long-term financial plan. As you, you know the challenges as well as I do. There's, the needs we have are outpacing our resources. We have, we have faced for a while the kick-the-can syndrome, where we don't, haven't addressed some of the needs that we need. We've presented the council with a number of scenarios, a two-million bonding, so often, a four-million, eight-million. We just haven't found the right fit and how that fits together. It's just, the long-term plan's not working right now. We still have to find that magic solution. And that plan also has to continue. Besides roads, it has to do parks and equipment. So we've been talking again with elders consistently. We actually had a conference today to talk that further. And they will also be here on the twenty, on the October workshop to, to give you a proposal and to go through a few things. And one of those things is the current approach that we're thinking and have mentioned at a few meetings here, or at least the last one. That's a ten, for, just for street repair, a ten-million-dollar bond over five years. We believe if we do that, it might get us, it might stabilize that first five years and then be able for us to slot in the following years in the financial plan. It's still, we're still testing that model and seeing how that works, but that's the theory. What that'll do is allow for, you know, efficient construction planning and bidding, identifying that kind of funding. We can seek matching grants. We can better partner with the state and county improvements. However, this only addresses some of the maintenance roads. It doesn't mention, it doesn't face those roads that are called major reconstructions. So to, to explain that a little bit, which I know you have been explaining to, maintenance is a mill and overlay. You scrape off the top, basically, and stop me if I'm going way off my, but you scrape off the top, you know, and you've all seen the machines on the highways and stuff, and you put a new road asphalt. You fix the soft spots in the road. But a major change, a major reconstruction, that means you dig up the whole road, you go down, you dig up the base, you make, you replace water and sewer lines as necessary, put a new base down, put a new work, first course and a wear course down. So it's a total dig up of that. So what the ten-million, five-year plan does not anticipate and no addresses those, are those roads that we have to have major construction on. That's why the council and staff have to address the assessment policy that we have. Currently, our road policy is to special assess on all major reconstructions. And we have to decide if that's still something we want to do. So for example, if we have to do North Shore Trail, which is probably a total reconstruction, are we ready to assess those people on North Shore Trail, whatever the cost is going to be for that major reconstruction? Or should we consider changing that policy and using bonding for some of that major reconstruction? And some of that will be determined by the cost of those. So for example, let's say it costs two and a half million to do North Shore Trail. Do we want to then, if we're bonding ten million, do we want to do, you know, another two and a half million? Or do we want to hold off on that for five years until we get past the first five? So we've got a lot of play there to figure out what we do. We have to identify that. But right now, we strongly, or go to strongly recommend the ten-million, five-years approach for, for maintenance construction. Talking to elders today, just to get you an idea of what rates are, I believe that they just sold a seven-million-dollar bond for, I forget the name, I have it in my notes, but the interest rate was one-point-four-six percent for a twenty-year bond. Again, that's a pretty low rate. We don't, can't make that always on our investments, or you can't make that on your savings account, really. So we, again, should take a look at that and see if we should take advantage of those rates. I thought at one time that we would go into twenty, not bond until two thousand and twenty-two. We may accelerate that to two thousand and twenty-one, but have no impact on the levy for two thousand and twenty-two. There's ways to do that, to delay, again, not to get too far to capitalize interest or to interest-only payments, or just not pay until two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, I guess it would be. So. We, elders are working on some of that and when we should do that. Part of that discussion is also, as we have mentioned before, the capital equipment certificates, which basically is a leasing of equipment. And we're identifying the largest pieces of equipment that are most expensive, the fire trucks, the plow trucks, which, you know, fire trucks, we're talking seven-hundred thousand, plows, we're talking in the two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-thousand-dollar range. Those are long-lasting pieces of equipment. Leasing seems to make some sense there because we put a ten-year lease. We'll still have ten more years out of them. We'll just stretch those payments out. We'll use some of that savings possibly to redeploy into the parks that we need to start to look at. So it is a moving kind of thing right now. Hopefully, in the next few weeks, we will get that all straightened out and be able to provide you with some of that. We're hoping some of that may give us some levy relief in this year's budget. I can't promise you that at this point, but that's, that's part of the goal that we're seeing. Okay, if we can provide some levy relief by doing this, we will look at it. Again, no promises, but we'll look at it. So. And just as you all know, when we have new development, that pays the cost of full infrastructure. They pay for water, sewer, and streets. It's a policy we should not change. We should make sure that we continue to make that policy. And I've talked a little bit about funding sources. We, we need to continue our increase of tax levy every year for roads so that we get to a good place. We try, have been trying to do that on an annual base, on an annual basis for our levy. We need to continue that. Obviously, we can issue debt for those, for those roads. We do have franchise fees that we use for roads that we should see when that renews and if we need to look at raising those rates. And there is some talk about the past federal legislation regarding infrastructure and how that may affect roads. We don't know that yet. We have no idea that, that guidance or any of those programs haven't come down from the Fed yet. Knowing the amount of what they're doing or, and/or the new legislation they're considering, we, we'll wait and see. I'm sure we won't have an answer for quite a while, if that's going to be something that'll benefit us. That may go through the state, and the state may then put it to the locals, or it may go through the county and so forth. So we, we just don't know. We're waiting and seeing on that. And that's all I have. Questions?
That was a lot of detail. Thank you.
Could you repeat that?
Even better than repeating it. Can you email this to all of us?
I'll absolutely do that, yes.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, I just, that was a very thorough analysis, and I, I really, really appreciate that. I know we've talked a lot about balancing growth with spending, and this really, I think, kind of paints that picture for us that that's, you know, genuinely what we are trying to do, not just raise taxes for the sake of raising taxes. But we, we have need, we're experiencing growth, and along with that growth comes, you know, that need for additional service. The other thing that I like about this is that it really does focus on our core functions, which are infrastructure and public safety. And that's our job. And, but it also is in direct alignment with our strategic plan. And that's the opportunity we gave our community to speak about where they wanted to see us directing resources. And, you know, that just kind of sums it up for me as I take a look at what's being proposed here, kind of that cost-benefit analysis from a council member's perspective.
Yeah, and we also hope to turn some of this information into some kind of a pamphlet or citizen budget book. I remember the last time we bonded, we did something like that. We'll look at doing that again so people better understand what we're trying to do and that we're not just trying to raise taxes or levies because that's what we want to do and we want to pad our wallets or anything. There really is a need here. There has been, again, the kick-the-can syndrome. It's been long past. These roads are not good. They need to be addressed. And we just have to figure out a way to do it.
There's never enough money for roads. I'm sorry. The, the point is, a thing about roads, too, you fix them, there's a little bit of a payback there, too, because there's less maintenance. So some things to consider there, too. But, yeah, I wish there's never enough money for roads, and I don't know how else to do it, you know?
Mayor Bean, just a couple comments. Patrick, I appreciate this PowerPoint. I think you've kind of put a spotlight on why we're in the predicament that we're in, and it tells a story. And I hope for the public and the citizens, they realize we don't take this lightly. We're doing our research, something that we said we do. And there is a need. And honestly, the opportunity, we have an opportunity to fix this. We have a real opportunity. We can't keep avoiding it and kicking it down the road. I mean, we just, we can't. It's not going to be the city that everyone actually really wants, if that's the case. So, just some comments.
Would just add, kind of echo comments that were previously made, or won't say the comments that were previously made. I agree with them. As I kind of look at what you've laid out and where we've focused this year and where we haven't yet focused, and we might see some answers in the ten-year plan, is we still aren't making the progress we need on parks. We haven't done anything in ten years, and we have, you know, some identified need on parks, and we have a propos, you know, some discussion of change in policy and how we're using park dedication fees and land versus fees. But I feel like if you look at where we are from level of new investment and where we are from what the public says they want, that it was the public's top need. But the public's also coming into that, I believe, with a foundation that we've already taken care of roads and public safety. And so I'm not arguing we do anything different. I just want to continue to highlight that we've met a lot of needs with this proposal, even with this large number that's before us for two thousand and twenty-two. We're, we're kicking fewer cans down the road, but we still don't, we still haven't solved that full park picture. And, and I, I don't think we've quite developed the vision that the community expects us to when they gave us that feedback. And again, I think we get there, and this is, I support the steps we're taking, but I just want to continue to highlight, we're still not getting to some of those important items that the community has said is important. I do think, I'll make a connection here, I do think we have an opportunity to bridge some of those gaps with the downtown redevelopment plan. Some of that's going to be focused on recreation, and like I said, memorial is a big part of that. But the comprehensive city park plan, we still have a number of holes to still tackle, so. But I, again, fully support making these steps and these incremental improvements to kick fewer cans down the road.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I think what I see here, when I take a look at this, it's, you know, we, we don't want to be spending indiscriminately, right? I mean, it's just, it's not our money. It's our taxpayers' money, and we have to be careful. But a lot of what's in this proposal are investments that are going to provide us some return, right? You know, whether it's the community development position, bringing more commercial industrial, you know, property tax into our community payers, you know, housing development, whatever it might be. A lot of these investments are going to provide us a return, and I don't think we can lose sight of that either.
Agree. So, Patrick, you've teed up a number of topics to be covered in this October, is it October nineteenth? I don't have.
I think that's correct.
Calendar right in front of me, our workshop in, in October. Certainly an opportunity to come back with a broader ten-year perspective at that time. Sounds like there might be some updated tweaks around the levy, suggestions possibly between now and December. But it sounds like the recommendation for the levy at the, at the previously discussed amount stands.
Yeah, I, I would fully recommend the stated levy, proposed levy. As always, or at least the last few years, we have worked between the adoption of a proposed levy and the final levy to try to find ways to reduce that or find, reevaluate revenues or expenditures to see if there's anything there. And we've been pretty successful finding a little bit. I mean, we haven't dramatically dropped any levies, obviously. It's usually been a half a point or something. But we, that's, that's what you pay us for doing. That's what we should be doing. It's our responsibility to do that, so we'll go forward. The only thing that, out of this presentation, is I'll either ask you tonight or in October to accelerate the hiring of the community development director, possibly to begin the advertisement right away so that the beginning of two thousand and twenty-two, we can hit the ground and go. I think we'll have savings from two vacant positions now to cover that. So if the council would like to consider that, either this meeting or at the workshop in October, I believe that would be a good step.
I'm also really anxious to kind of better understand the impact of leasing. I know when I was a school board member, we did that with, with our school bus fleet. And it was, it was a really wise move for us organizationally. So I would, I would, I'm really anxious to learn more about.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense with the current rates and with the age, the lifespan of that equipment and the cost of that equipment to lease. You know, it, it's, you know, everybody likes to pay cash, right? I mean, that's, everybody says, I'm going to pay cash. But with the rates that we're showing, and again, I don't know if the rates are still what elders told me on leasing at point-eight percent. If that's still the case, it may be one-point-one or something. But with that, and, and that'll take some of the pressure off of the levy as well. Because you're, you know, if we were to fully fund the equipment fund, I mean, we need a million and a half dollars probably every year to go forward. Right now, we've, we've got that, but the, the levels that we're going to spend in the next couple of years on fires and plow trucks, we're going to have a negative fund balance. We don't want to do that. So leasing is smart. So leasing is smart and it makes a lot of sense at this point.
Regarding your question around timing of advertising the Community Development Director position, our next meeting is October 11th, I believe. That's Columbus Day. Do we move to Tuesday on Columbus Day?
I don't think Columbus Day is off.
It's not a, not a federal holiday. Okay, so next meeting is October 11th. Is there anything, are you looking for permission to start advertising that now? And if we were to wait until approving that position until the 11th where we could see a formal job description, do you see?
I, I don't see that as an issue. I just think, you know, a couple of weeks aren't going to make the difference. We need to write up the job description anyways because it's not only a community development, but it's an EDA. So it's going to be a hybrid job description. We already obviously have the Community Development Job Description from the last time. We'll add EDA to that, so I don't think, waiting till the 11th is an issue for us.
Are you anticipating that that's an exempt position or part of a negotiated position?
Unknown at this time.
Okay. I, my personal preference, I'm open to feedback from council. My preference would be, let's bundle those things up, at least our outline of job description, whether it's an exempt position or expected to be part of one of the bargaining units. And then a high-level budget summary. I recognize there are some budget dollars available yet this year, just to hear what, what that, I, I would benefit from that. But if you think that there's something time sensitive?
No, I don't. I think that the 11th is fine.
Council, are you okay with that timeline?
Oh, sure.
The other budget discussion questions?
Yeah, just one more comment about roads. They don't get cheaper to do. They get more and more expensive every single year.
Absolutely.
And if you, if you sit on it, it just gets worse. And, and so we gotta look at it that way, I'm too, so, thank you.
And I appreciate the exercise of the, you know, pieces need to fit of this 10-year plan and trying to get these projects sequenced in a way that the budget fits. But even, even something north of what we have today, which is not a 10-year plan, I think is good progress. So if there's some uncertainty in future years, I'm open to seeing a plan that even has some uncertainty in future years because again, I think there's some immediate items that we need to consider.
Yeah, I think if we can stabilize the next five years and have the, at least the short-term look at that, if, if we know that that's the road maintenance issue and we maybe address parks a bit. I think that's a longer-term funding issue that we need to, but with roads, if we, five years is good and then we can add on, like you say, what's the next five, 10 or 15 years and how uncertain, try to figure that out. But we need to make some kind of decision here. And again, it's been chasing our tails with what's the right scenario and I think this might be the one, we're not sure yet.
Okay, understood. And also just every time we say 10-year plan, we might actually be meaning 20-year plan by the time everything's baked in, right?
I think that's going to be absolutely the case.
And, and I think it's important for the community to understand, I mean, if, if we're proposing a $10 million bond, it's important, or, or whatever it is we ultimately end up proposing, what's wrapped into that?
Yep.
You know, what specifically is wrapped into that? Because we get compl, I do complaints every week about our roads. No ifs, ands or buts about it. So North Shore, Eureka Forest Road, North Shore, Eureka Forest Road.
And again, that's, those are, we're talking major reconstructions on those streets we just mentioned. You know, you're going to talk about Eureka tonight. It's on the discussion about whether we, what we should be doing with that. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. But again, it's more complicated with these major reconstruction roads and we have to really identify what that's going to do. And then if we're going to bond this fall and maybe then again sometime next year, we should have made those decisions on the assessment policy and if, if we want to continue with that method or do something different.
Agree. So council, we have one more item on the action for this evening and that is consideration of resolution for the preliminary tax levy. Any other questions we have of staff before we consider that resolution? Or is anybody ready to make a motion?
Mayor Bean, I'd like to make a motion, which I do not make lightly, but I'd like to move to adopt Resolution Number 09-27-21-04, a resolution approving the 2022 preliminary property tax levy and preliminary 2022 budget and setting public, the public hearing date for the 2022 budget and property tax levy.
I'll second it. We have a motion from Councilmember Munson and a second from Councilmember Beistrum. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all of those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And motion carries. That concludes our action items this evening. We are going to move into a discussion portion of the agenda. This is a workshop session only. Anything that's discussed tonight that would require official action will come forward at a council, future council meeting for official action. So we're going to move into a more informal, unstructured portion of our meeting and we're going to start with a discussion on Eureka Avenue. And who is starting discussion on Eureka?
Well, I think that, you know, I'll tee it up at least. Eureka Avenue, as you know, we had the, is it Clear Lake, I guess it was, Association come in and expressed their concern about Eureka Avenue and the erosion and people, people parking along the side of Eureka Avenue. On the recommendation of Ryan, I, I drove over Eureka Avenue and it needs attention. It's probably the worst road in the city right now. The, the difficulty with Eureka Avenue is the, the width of the road and it can't get much bigger. You're surrounded by wetlands on one side and a lake on the other. So the question is, well, how do we address repaving that road? Internally, we had staff, staff discuss it, discussions and we believe the best recommendation would be to close Eureka and cul-de-sac it on both sides. Put a trail between the two cul-de-sacs and a fishing pier and make it a recreational area. And Ryan can jump in here anytime. We believe that a reconstruction or repaving of that road will cost 1, 1.5, 1.6 million. If we cul-de-sac it, put some parking in on each side and put just a trail and a fishing pier or whatever to make it more of a recreational area, we believe it only costs us half of that, 1.5, 1.500, something thousand. It makes some sense. It's not a great road. It's a dangerous road, particularly in the wintertime right now when it's plowed because it's so uneven, it just dices up. It's narrow. Again, we have people fishing there. We have trucks parked on the side. It's a cut-through. Recently, we are having semi-trucks cut through there. It's a road we don't need to service. I mean, we probably should have some discussions with Columbus because I know their residents use that a little bit. But it's our recommendation that we consider closing that road and plan for cul-de-sacking that road and making it a recreational area.
What, just question, do we have an idea of number of vehicle, what the vehicle count is per day on that?
I can look that up quick.
That would be helpful.
I'll have to get into Mid-Alt.
Yeah, understood.
So it is considered, well, it is a designated state aid route right now. So every four years, we are required to do traffic counts on our state aid roads. So we're coming up to that point again. We would be due for the stuff to be submitted in 2022.
So can you explain in greater detail cul-de-sac it? What, what do you, so you where? Because, I mean, the intersection with 97 was improved with the idea that there was going to be some probably commercial development in that area.
I believe that's right. Kind of where that's going to happen.
Okay.
Mayor City Council, the concept that we've just developed internally for discussion points and then put a cost estimate together to see kind of where we've landed. I mean, we're looking at cost savings of a million dollars, but moving forward, you don't have any deal with this type of road in the conditions and environment that it exists today. I mean, you're not going to dramatically improve the condition out there where kids and families are trying to use this area as recreation and fish right off the side of the road and cars are driving at the speeds that they're driving. I mean, just go out there any morning during morning commute time. Sit in your car on the side of the road and you'll know exactly what I'm talking about. And they'll drive through there slowly, they'll tailgate you. The road conditions are deteriorating to a point that it's our recommendation to close this shortly prior to our first snowfall because Public Works is not going to get on this road and snowplow it like you would a, a normal road because it's, there's rutting, severe rutting out there and their blade can't get down to that. When the road does this through the wheel ruts, they're only going to, the blade's going to touch the highest point of the pavement.
And then does it turn to ice?
So that, that area in between is always going to be snow and ice, right? Or they're going to salt the blank out of the road and that's going to go right into the lake too. And so then there's another environmental thing there. So that, that's the issues and concerns we're at, the narrowness of the road, the speed of the road, but the condition of the road and then what goes along, happens on a daily basis on the side of the road. And basically, it comes down to dollars again. I mean, we're talking a million dollars in savings with the initial project. And if, you know, you come with a reconstruct, you're going to have to deal with it again and again and again in the future. At what point then do you decide after a fatality happens along that road that it wasn't worth it? I mean, why would we put ourselves in that situation when overall our transportation network, this doesn't serve as a great need for the city of Forest Lake based on traffic routes, business access and public safety? We've had this discussion with this and the fire and Public Works. There's no businesses and no residents around it, so this would be 100% cost of the city too on that. And I think there's a lot of other roads and investments within the community that would have a much greater impact if we were to improve those. And whether it's recreational, pedestrian, safety, you know, all that other stuff that goes along with those other roads we're talking about that has commercial or industrial or residential property adjacent to it. Here, I think you got a great opportunity of where we're talking about the cul-de-sacs, you know, on the south end, you know, maybe it's in the city limits, maybe we work with Columbus to pull it back farther. But there is a kind of already a hammerhead area out there that we could, you know, build a cul-de-sac and some parking stalls off the, the side of that, that, you know, you could park on the south side then use that trail to access yourself in. On the north side, you got, if you're coming south, you got that first access point into the DNR launch and then that driveway or that parking lot goes pretty far south. We would work with the DNR to try to have another access as a turnaround on the south end of the parking lot so there would be a looping through there. But then you would have the road wide enough still in that area to allow on-street parking right there of that looping area and then maybe some hammerhead parking at that area too, to allow the vehicle traffic to park there to access the trail down to go fish or a fishing pier or just, you know, recreational purposes you're biking through there. And you'd still want to maintain the boat launch parking that exists today. So that's kind of what we've talked about internally and reviewed, sat out there, watched what happens, the behavior, the situations, how close they're skimming my mirrors, you know? And I have my flashers on and, you know, they're not flinching, so. And with the road conditions coming up and the condition of the road, it's just not worth the chance moving into winter and that's going to be a slippery ice skating rink with vehicle traffic trying to do 40, 50 miles an hour down there.
So Ryan, you put that first cul-de-sac on the north near that, near the landing there then? Is that the idea or would you go a little bit further?
So what we do is you got that north driveway already. You see where the pinch point almost touches the road? We would build another access in there, which would allow the turnaround.
Right.
We could keep Eureka full width road from there to the north driveway access. That way you could have some on-street parking for vehicles to access the lake for fishing and stuff. So you'd park there and you'd walk down. Depending on how much space we could get in that area, you could do a portion of a hammerhead or a cul, a mini cul-de-sac too to get some more spaces in that area.
Well, the reason I brought it up is a cul-de-sac to me implies that, that you have, you have an area that you can make a turn in there, you know?
Yeah, but with the driveway, we would try to utilize the pavement that's already there for that turnaround. We've worked with Public Works on how the geometry would work for snow plowing too. So they'd still be responsible for all that stuff.
And then on the south side, where, where would you end there?
Just.
Yeah. Would you rate it net? One or there?
Where do you want me to go?
Oh, just so you see the road.
Right, right there, right there, zoom in, zoom in. I'll go northwest.
Roll it up onto the screen.
See that little hammerhead already?
Oh, yeah.
We would build a traditional cul-de-sac, but skewed to one side.
That's where Public Works uses it, turn around right on, it's the end of the city when it's there.
Have we had any resident feedback yet?
Oh, we're initiating our engagement with you guys first.
Perfect. So question, I know there's always times where there's a squad car that's in an odd spot and is responding to another part of the city. But generally, is that section of Eureka that is on the west side of Clear Lake, is that ever used as a squad response route for anything other than someone happens to be already there and going somewhere else in the city?
Once in a while, depending on where we're actually at when we get that call. We have utilized that, but not that often because you, because of the road, because it is in such bad condition and with the roads and, or with your passing other cars. You definitely do not want to be going too much faster than the speed limit on that road. So if we have an opportunity, we would usually jump on 35 and utilize that going either north or south.
So you don't have, if we were to close this, you don't have a, you don't have a concern with us upping a response time in another part of the city? Or is that?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
With the way they've restructured and remodeled, 97 over 35, it's much easier for us to just take 35 and, from south and get to the, any of the houses on 97. And then same with going north, if we were down on 97, going back up in the north end of Clear Lake there.
So 2014, this road had an annually, annual daily traffic of 2,200 vehicles per day. Counts weren't able to be obtained in 2018 because remember the road was closed. This is our only state aid segment that wasn't able to be counted.
Can you say that again, Ryan?
2,200 vehicles per day was the annual average daily traffic.
Do you have any indication of how much of that is residential local use versus through traffic?
I think it's through traffic, yeah.
Either real data, anecdotal data?
I think it's coming from Columbus, a lot of your traffic. Or it's your, you know, your early commuters, but a lot of them were, if you follow the cars that are driving in the morning too, a lot of them, if they're going northbound, they'll go up to the county road, take a left, over the bridge, past county road, county stated highway 33 or Everton and go west up into that neighborhood there in Columbus. But then there's some that, you know, that development right there in Forest Lake too. But they're easy access in connection to Broadway, now that Broadway's been improved too.
There was a time when this route was kind of well-known for the Lino and Blaine, Lila commuters. It was kind of like the mini bus su, or the minivan superhighway of like the shortcut to get to Lila. But now that I think 97's been improved, I think that's been, I, I hope that that's no longer the case. But morning and afternoon was, it was quite busy. When you're doing a buzzer reader.
I have a quick question, or actually maybe it's not quick, but I know you said you're just bringing this here tonight to discuss, but what is the process to close a road to get feedback?
That's a good question.
Closely work with your neighboring people you might affect, the city of Columbus, Public Safety, Public Works. Might want to reach out to the residents on the north side of Clear Lake that live along the private road of 217th. And whatever area you feel is appropriate to extend out of that limits. Some communities will do a, a traffic count of attorney movements at particular intersections to know where traffic might be coming from. You know, those are just kind of the steps that they go into it. Might be just a thing we do during the winter to see what reaction you guys get going into next year and through the budgeting cycle. The road was closed for, we were told it was going to be closed for a year, but it ended up being closed for two years, you know, when Columbus and Mid-Alt were doing their projects. So it was relatively quiet and not used for 18 and 19. So it was relatively quiet and not used for 18 and 19.
I appreciate the immediacy of needing to make this decision, but I hesitate to say that it's just a winter decision because actually I, my perception is that it's more of a safety hazard in the summer when you've got fishing, you know, you've got the pedestrian traffic and the recreational traffic along with the cars. And so, yes, there's an obvious maintenance plow challenge of the winter, but I think we also, there's an ongoing safety concern.
Well, the road's deteriorated a lot through just the summer. So we're coming here, you know, prior to winters because we're not going to be able to snowplow this adequately like we are able to other roads. This road also is very skinny, no shoulders, and there's no traffic barriers, no guardrail, none of that. So where are people going to go, obviously in spots that are proposed life situations? You know, so another reason we're here tonight to see what direction you might want to take this? Do you want us to pursue those conversations with the people I just outlined? Or do we just let it go status quo?
That seems to be a logical next step. Me.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a problem, it's a problem we need to solve.
Safety issue.
We just need to figure out how to solve it, and I think the first step is getting that feedback.
And I think it makes some sense to close it for the winter just because of that safety issue, but knowing that that's not the permanent way that's going to stay closed. And that obviously will give us the winter and some better ideas where we're going with the dollars on paving. We can always reopen it, but I think that what we're being told here is that the winter months are going to be dangerous, it's going to be icy, it's going to be dangerous. And that a December 2, whatever closure might, actually, does make some sense this year with the analysis going forward on whether that's going to be a long-term closure or not.
Oh, yeah, also, if we have this perspective of a long-term closure and if you're able to present, yes, you're losing this, you're losing this access point, but what you're gaining is this great recreational amenity and we can articulate what that will be. It's, I think, a better presentation of.
The Clear Lake Association, when they came and talked about the erosion and the environmental impact of the road and salt, I think they'd be very happy to hear that we're considering a long-term or permanent closure of that so that the erosion because of the parking, because of the cars, they'd probably be in favor of that as well.
Is there a trail connectivity opportunity there?
So if we can get down to work with the city of Columbus through their boundary area, you know, they obviously built trail along Hornsby there.
Right.
And then Mid-Dev's talking about trail with the 97 project.
Right. So should we schedule a community meeting with those Clear Lake residents and just kind of walk them through the same type of presentation and hear feedback? I'd welcome the opportunity to get them together and hear that. I know they're an active group and would probably be good. I think we do get fairly good engagement if we were to plan something like that.
They may be able to network a little more broadly with other residents around the lake.
Yeah, we'll come up with an approach on what we need to do to discuss the permanent closure of Eureka.
Yeah.
I think Clear Lake folks would really like it. I'm not so sure the Columbus folks will though, so they gotta be part of that conversation for sure.
Also, I, you know, yes, Columbus folks might have some feedback, but I think as 97, it's, you know, 97 is, has improvements coming up and planned improvements, I think that whole stretch becomes, you know, if that's your route to, for example, get to the retail district off of 12th Avenue, you have some other far more safe alternatives that are getting some pretty significant improvements in the near term. So any disadvantage is pretty short-term. And ultimately, it's a safety issue, so it's got to weigh heavily on us. Any other questions or feedback items you'd like to have to consider, council?
I would like to better understand, and it doesn't have to happen tonight, but just kind of what, what is the vision then for that stretch of road? Is there going to be some sort of improvement there? You've talked a little bit about a fishing dock, you know, so as you're kind of flushing that out a little bit more, I'd just be curious to know what the vision is then.
Yeah, I think that's important for the overall discussion with the closure and non-closure, that if we close it, what are we going to do with it?
Right. Also, great opportunity just to get feedback from the Clear Lake residents on what they'd like to see there.
Can add to our part clock.
Right. Staff, anything else, Ryan, Dave, Patrick, you need from us? All right. Great discussion, thank you. Patrick, I'm assuming we went through everything related to budget or?
Absolutely.
Okay. That closes the discussion portion of our agenda. Let's go through staff updates and let's just start here at the beginning of the dais and wrap our way around. Karen, do you want to start?
I have no comments, Mayor Bean.
Anything for Karen tonight? All right, thank you, Dan.
Mayor members of council, I just want everybody to know that all of the communications for the watering ban are now live on the website. And I did also tie those back into the education on the odd even as well. And we'll work with Dave on some subsequent communications later on because we do have an irrigation water sense rebate program right now. So since this is kind of a hot topic, we'll try to tie some future communications in. The website's updated, Nextdoor's updated, Facebook's updated, and I pulled it off the sign, so.
Perfect.
Full court press.
Thank you, well done. Any questions for Dan? Pete?
Your honor, I have no update.
All right. Patrick?
No update, I've gone through everything I've had to say today.
All right, Dave?
Just in light of the open forum opening that will be October 11th meeting, just to do a presentation on that street lighting denial. So you guys can discuss and see.
That's coming before council?
Got to spring it back on the other, for you guys to take a look at.
Perfect, thank you. Brian?
Mayor City Council, next Monday, up in the community room, 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM, we'll be holding the public open house for our North Shore Circle, street utility improvements. October 18th, City Council Workshop, Washington County will be here to present on Everton Avenue or County Stated Highway 33 project. Look and then come into the following city council meeting to obtain a resolution of support of the project. That's procedure required when there's municipal funds involved in projects that they're required to obtain municipal consents. States had to do that on projects too, so. But they'll be here at the October 18th City Council Workshop.
Very good. Thank you, Ryan. Anyone have anything for Ryan? All right, Chief Peterson?
No updates for you tonight.
All right, anything for Chief? Chief Newman?
I only have one update tonight. This Thursday at 7:00 PM at Station 1, we have our joint fire board meeting. Only one item on the agenda, so it should be a pretty quick meeting. That's all I have for updates.
Yeah, tell me the date again, what was that date?
It is 9:30.
At 7:00 PM, you said?
7:00 PM, yep, Station 1.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone have anything for Chief Newman? All right, and Sandy?
Nothing to add to that unless there's any questions for me.
Anything for Sandy? All right. Let's go right along council, Councilmember Munson.
Just one comment, I attended the downtown workshop last week and really enjoyed it. Dan, you did a great job of setting that up and doing it the hybrid. It was, it was really fun actually, so thank you.
Excellent.
And I just, I would just echo Councilmember Munson's comments. I was in the virtual session and we were having some pretty robust discussion there too. So very well done, very well done.
If I may, it's like on the virtual session, because Bruce had asked me for any specific feedback on the virtual session. So after, if you have any ways to improve that, let me know, I'll pass it along to Bruce, but he was looking for virtual session feedback.
I will do that, yeah.
Very good. Councilmember Huestick?
I also attended the workshop that evening. And then this evening, I also attended a meeting of the Economic Development Authority in the downtown committee workshop as a follow-up to that meeting that we had last Monday. So lots of work to do yet, but I think there was a lot of progress done here tonight too, so. Other than that, that's all I have, so thank you.
Very good, Councilmember Valento?
I attended the workshop as well, it was super fun and productive. And last week we met, the Cable Commission met for a workshop to go over the bylaws and it went super well, so that should be coming up on the next Cable Commission regular meeting to be voted on.
Fabulous. Is there still a thought that Scandia might be rejoining the Cable Commission?
It's up in the air, I feel like Dan might know more. I know, last I heard Scandia wanted to join.
Scandia rejoining Cable Commission, is that still consideration?
They, they keep wanting to come back in, and where it sits right now with Paul is a capacity issue to see if their staff there have enough capacity to take on the extra workload. I believe the last conversation I had with Paul regarding it was the initiative from Scandia wanted to get a presentation together to kind of do the road show to say what they're going to, you know, offer to come back into the, into the commission, so. I haven't seen anything formal come back beyond what Paul has told me.
Oh, I did hear that they, that reminded me. I did hear that they, that Scandia approved a resolution to get back into the joint powers agreement. But my only concern with the joint powers agreement is that if you actually read that agreement, there's literally no way for a city to come in.
The whole joint powers agreement have to be rewritten, I think.
I would assume so, so.
It's a redo, so.
Yeah.
Very good. Just a quick update from me, for me, I also attended the same workshop that, on the committee workshop for downtown, the downtown plan. And then we did, as Councilmember Huestick mentioned, we did circle back with the downtown committee today in our EDA meeting. We had kind of a follow-up discussion, the proposed vision statement that we had come drafted in our workshop kind of came back as kind of here was the consensus. The only real topic was some, we were pretty deep into wordsmithing, which is always a nice place to be at this point in the project, but then also some consideration of whether or not we specifically needed to call out housing. Housing, when you look at the top five on everyone's list, didn't ever, there wasn't anything that made housing be specifically called out. And there was just kind of a question of, well, even though it wasn't on the top five, does it still need to be in the vision statement? There's a number of versions that are going to be sent back out to the downtown committee members for some email feedback back to staff. And then all of that is expected to come back to council along with those recommendations at our next council meeting. So Bruce will be here to present that. He is looking for, sounds like adoption of that vision statement sooner rather than later as it does help to guide future activities because then we start moving into more of the logistics of the project. And so the more precise we can be, the more specified they can be in those efforts. And so just be thinking about that of how much, how important is housing to be a stated objective? Or is it kind of a secondary objective that goes with everything else in the list? This will all make a lot more sense when you see it at our next council meeting. That's all I have, and nothing before, nothing else before council on our agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye, oppose, and we adjourned. Thank you, everybody.